Yes, me. Eddie.
Tom, you coming back in? Yeah.
I just have to announce specifically the nomination.
Absolutely. Sheila. You just want to? Mary call back in? Okay, any motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, we have a second.
Second.
Ms. Wakeis. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions unheard? We're now reconvene. Solicitor, please.
As discussed prior to going into executive session, it was an executive session regarding collective bargaining and litigation. So the public is aware what litigation we were discussing. We were discussing Wilkes-Barre City's recently, or as of today, filed litigation versus the county and other entities regarding the Highland Park tip.
Thank you. Going back to number four, we need a motion to adopt a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between Lusar and County, ASME, AFL-CIO, District Council eighty-seven, court-related unit.
So moved.
Mr. Snee?
Second.
Mr. Kelleher? On the question? On the question? There are none?
What question can you ask?
Excuse me?
What question can you ask? What question can you ask about an executive session topic?
You can't on an executive session, but you can on other items possibly.
What other item is there? Everything that was discussed in the contract is done in executive session. It's not to be disclosed to the public. So what question can you ask? None.
Ms. Urban, it's up to you. Whichever you wish.
Let me ask.
Resolution, we need a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sademan?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeis?
Yes.
Mr. Brminske?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Motion carries, ten to one. Moving down to number five, boards and commissions nominations and appointments. Need a motion to open up nominations.
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, we have a second.
Second.
Ms. Wakeis, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, any abstentions unheard? Nominations now open. Mr. Kelleher, do you want to comment on anything before we begin?
Yes. I don't know if Mr. Griffith mentioned Mr. Dixon. I got a call from Mr. Dixon who was working out in the gym. He read the article in the paper that we need people. He said, "I'd like to file my name," and he asked about process. I told him what you do. And he did file. I said, "The only thing I explained to him is you're gonna have to take an interview." It's a public interview. He said, "No problem." So that's the only conversation I had with him. I don't know if anyone else did, but we had Mr. Dixon and Mr. Alex Malanis, who had interviewed and he's still under the two-year umbrella. So the two have submitted their names to be the Republican member of the Ethics Committee. And the young lady Clayton, I believe the name is correct. The young lady who interviewed for aging. The name. Angel, yes. What's the name?
Mathis.
Mathis. Wonderful young lady. She was, she's going to school. She didn't know if she could serve, but she realizes by her schedule now that she can go back on the aging board. So those are our nominations, the names in play. You have Mr. Malanis, Mr. Dixon, and Ms. Mathis.
And you said Ms. Mathis cannot serve?
Can.
Oh, can.
She was worried whether she could put the time in because she's now going back to college.
Okay. Do we have any nominations for the Ace Commission for the Republican spot on the Ace Commission?
Mark Dixon.
Mr. Snee?
Second.
And second by Ms. Wakeis, correct? Any other nominations?
My name, Malanis.
Mr. Malanis? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? There are none, the motion fails. Anyone else? Those are only two nominations permissible under the eligibility list. We have a motion to close the nominations.
Motion to close nominations, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Haas?
Second.
Mr. Snee? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We need a motion to, a resolution, excuse me, to appoint Mr. Dixon to the Republican spot on the Ace Commission. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sademan?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeis?
Yes.
Mr. Brminske?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten to one, motion carries. We need a motion to open up nominations for the aging position.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kelleher, Mr. Snee is the second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition, any abstentions unheard? Motion carries. We have one name, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Kelleher? We have a nomination?
I'll make nomination for Angel Mathis.
Second.
Mr. Urban nominates Angela and Mr. Snee is the second. Need a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Mr. Snee in this segment? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions unheard? We need now vote on a resolution to appoint Mrs. Mathis to the aging.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sademan?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeis?
Yes.
Mr. Brminske?
Yes.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Malanis, motion carries. Moving down, Ms. Hou. Administrative Code of Amendment, ordinance. Need a motion?
Well, actually, because it deals with the administrative code, similarly to the ordinances that were introduced by the manager. I believe the charter provides that it stands introduced.
I'm sorry, to the Commissioner. Solicitor, excuse me.
Same section, same section that was referred to when the manager introduced the ordinances at the meeting last month.
We disagree. I mean, that sentence deals with manager introduction. This is the way it's been done since, since home rule.
I understand that, and I thought it should've been done that way too, but it looked to me like the rules changed.
I disagree. There's been a dozen introductions of ordinances amending Personnel Code, Administrative Code, the Ace Code. We've always had council when they introduce ordinances for votes. The manager is required in certain circumstances to present ordinances to council. Obviously, he cannot introduce it. He doesn't have a vote. So, I mean, the opinion is the same that it's been since 2012. It was discussed, the question by council asked in like 2014. It was the same opinion given then.
All right, I'll make the motion to introduce the ordinance.
Make some motion, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Urban? On the question?
Well, if I could just speak to it.
Absolutely.
The ordinance is to require contracts or obligations requiring more than $25,000 in one year, or $75,000 in two or more years, to be itemized by line in the annual budgets and to have a defined scope of work. So that when we take the time to go through the budget preparation, instead of having one line item that encompasses all of the contracts in one division, we would actually see the line, a line item for each vendor for a substantial contract that would be over $25,000 in one year or $75,000 in two or more years. And at the bottom, if you look at the section that would be added, it just says budget itemization. Any contract or obligation would have a specific line in the annual budgets of the county. If any such contract or obligation is not defined, it must be approved by council, which would mean that if the manager signed a contract now, that would commit us to a substantial amount of money, over $25,000, that it would have to be approved by council in this year because it would not have a line item in this year's budget. Just so that we have clarity and transparency in the contracts, the major contracts that are coming before the county and that are assigned by the manager. That's the purpose of this.
Anyone else?
You've been there in the admini, working with the administrators. How many projected line items do you see this adding per year?
Well, I don't think we have that many that, that go over $25,000. But I do think that if we have one that is more than $25,000, I think we should all be aware of it. I really don't care how many it is. I think we should know what those huge contracts are. Those are substantial contracts and substantial commitments of money on the part of the county. And I think that they ought to be itemized so that we all know what they are instead of having one big pot of money there that just says this is gonna take care of all of our contracts. Do we have an idea, Mr. Pedri, of how many contracts of that size we have?
Hundreds.
Hundreds? Well?
Any other questions?
I'd like to have an exact count, actually, rather than a term of hundreds.
Yeah, obviously, I was just handed this today. But I'd be happy to, and I'd be happy to give you my thoughts on this really briefly if you want to hear them now.
I think, Wakeis, does you have a question?
Well, I had, but I think you were first, Mr. Perry.
Yes, Perry. County Manager, how does this affect you in your day-to-day operations?
This, this absolutely stops county government. There's a lot of things that I hear of as county manager, but one of the things I never hear is, boy, Dave, you're getting too many things done. Will you just slow down? I'd never hear that. And this will absolutely stop county government in its tracks. And here's the situation, and I understand Ms. Hou wants to say words like transparency, and doesn't that sound nice to have everything in the budget? And that sounds great. It's impossible. Here's what's gonna happen. In September of, in September of this year, we would have to have all of the contracts negotiated and signed and put into the budget. Now, this is, who's gonna do that? Our Budget and Finance Department. Same Budget and Finance Department that Ms. Hou believes doesn't need assistance on payroll, doesn't need assistance on budget. They're gonna do a whole thing themselves and they're gonna put, they're gonna put probably, let's say 500 on the low end, contracts into the budget line by line, and now we're gonna review them step by step for County Council to review them. That sounds nice. But let's be honest as to what this really is. This is a way for County Council to approve every single contract that comes in front of the county. Let's be honest as to what this ordinance really does. This puts all these contracts over $25,000 in front of County Council. Will it affect day-to-day operations? Absolutely. It absolutely will slow down everything we're doing here. Every single contract, hundreds of contracts will go in front of this council with agenda submittals, resolutions, review time period, work sessions, maybe a committee session, back-to-work session, a table session. Every single contract is what we're gonna be doing here. And you know what? If we look at the charter and you say, you wanna use words like buzz, buzzwords like transparency and those type of things, that's fine, but let's talk about what politics are. Let's talk about what bad politics are. Because the framers of the Charter wrote forth in the Charter that specific contracts get approved by this County Council, and it's contracts over $25,000 in a year that's not budgeted. The framers of the Charter specifically identified that they didn't want bad politics. They didn't want this board to be making decisions on every single contract. Now, listen, what's gonna happen? I'm not accusing anybody on this particular panel, but 10 years from now, 20 years from now, what happens if an individual comes up who gave a $5,000 donation to every member of council? Can they all recuse themselves? Do they all have to recuse themselves? You're infusing politics directly back into the process here. And this County Council becomes a contract review process. You're adding over hundreds of line items into the county budget. And I'll be honest, when it comes down to the 2014, I wanna look at the 2014-1 ordinance that set forth what the position budget was. There was some discussion, that was also brought by Ms. Hou at the time, and there was some discussion at the time that this could potentially set up a salary board type of thing. And the Commissioner, I mean, the council members and the county manager sat down and said, "Hey, listen, here's what we can do, here's what we can't do to make sure that there's a separation of powers. But County Council should have a clear understanding as to who works for the government, what positions are in the budget." And we came together with 2014-1 regarding the position budget. That was amendment to section 8.02 of the Admin Code. And it works. It specifically didn't allow this County Council to make decisions on every single individual's salary, if not in the budget. The county can continue to move forward regarding the situation, that's what we have here. Listen, go on the county manager website anytime you want. They're right out there. Every single contract that I sign is right out there in the public. And if any council member has a concern about any single contract that I've signed, you can bring it to my attention. And if any, if six members of County Council has an issue regarding that specific contract, you can take the money out of the budget, which is your check and balance, to pay for that contract. And that would mean that I've gone too far as a county manager to do so. Obviously, we're still negotiating, we're still discussing the ADP contract that some members of County Council believe that, that there's been an overstepping. I obviously believe that there has been no overstepping. But we're talking over hundreds of contracts come in front of this County Council. It will slow down government. And maybe that's what this is supposed to, is maybe we're supposed to slow down this government. Maybe they don't like the fact that we're succeeding here in Lusar and County. Maybe they don't like the fact that we have two budgets that have shown million-dollar surpluses over the past three, over the past two years. That's the truth. And I like to think that county management has a little bit to do with the fact that we are succeeding. So that's, that's the way I see this particular ordinance, but obviously it's County Council's as to how they would like to proceed with the vote.
Ms. Wakeis?
Yes, I just had a question, Linda, clarification. You're talking about vendor contracts or work?
Well, whatever contract would surpass that amount. And I find it hard to believe that we don't have a list of those contracts that are in that amount and that they can't just be put into the budget with the specific amount of the contract for each year as they're, as they're approved by the manager. This doesn't prohibit the manager from signing a contract. It just says we wanna see them itemized. It doesn't say that we need to approve them unless he's gonna bring one up in the, in the middle of the year when the budget is already done.
But we are certainly not including labor contracts in this.
We approve labor contracts already.
Yes, we do.
That would not be part of this.
Okay.
This would be a contract such as the one that Mr. Pedri referred to with ADP. And so, yes, those are the kinds of contracts that I'd be referring to.
Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
And I, we got it on the internet. How hard is it to put it on a list and bring it at budget time? I don't, I don't see an issue with bringing this list. You got a pot of money in a line item called contracts. You oughta know what that money's being spent on. Here's a list of what the money's being spent on. It has to add up to what the pot of money is you're asking for.
I have to submit.
We're not saying that, that he can't approve contracts, that they all have to come here. I think he was over-exaggerating what, what the requirements of this are. This is simply telling us what the pot of money in contract line item is and list of contracts. That's it. Nothing else.
And the fact is that when we do budget, when we go through the budget in October and November, we ask those questions. We say, "What's in there? Why not just have it all there in the budget already?" Because we do go through that and we ask what, what specific contracts are in there. That's how we find it out.
It's no different than the capital budget. Capital budget, you got a pot of money and you got allocation. You know what is gonna be spent on here. You got a contract budget and you know what's gonna be spent on. That's it. We don't have anything to do with the approval process and I don't want anything to do with the approval process.
Anyone else for questions? Segment?
Ms. Hou? This is, this resolution was designed because of your concern about the New World contract. Is that correct?
No.
And ADP contract?
Well, it's, it's not.
That is where, that's where the starting point was, is that correct?
No, actually, it isn't. I've been concerned about the contracts that have come before council or that have been in that pot of money for several years. And if you had been at some of the budget hearings over the last few years, you would've heard me ask in each case, when every division came forward and they had a pot of money allocated for things like this, what exactly is in there? So I think it is something that we need to have because we're gonna ask the question anyway. I don't really see the hardship in actually just putting it in writing.
So the only difference is we wanna put it in writing?
That's not the only difference. If you're, if you don't, that's ridiculous.
Wait, Mr. Kelleher, you have the floor.
Well, the only reason I'm asking.
It says budget itemization.
You were chair for two years.
Three years.
Three years. And you asked those questions and you would get your answers. And if you didn't get your answers, you would continue to ask your questions.
But we're the only ones who would know that. I mean, you put the budget.
Why it was done in secret?
It was done at a meeting, but it wasn't put in writing. So if someone went to the website and looked at our budget and saw the, saw that, that line item there, it was a pot of money for all the contracts that are in any division. It didn't itemize them. I don't know what the problem is with itemizing large contracts.
Could we ask one more question?
Sure.
Mr. Budget, Mr. Budget Man?
Mr. Swet?
Brian, Mr. Swet, what's your reaction?
I haven't read Ms. Hou's presentation. I know it's on the table. Obviously, I'm not a council, so it was an email to me. I honestly couldn't tell you how much extra work it's gonna be. I know for our individual stuff, for other financing, for budget and finance, I put the names for them, but that's only four or five things. I think if you're talking something like Ms. Hill in CMY, she probably has hundreds, if not thousands, of contracts that exceed that amount. So for me personally, in my division, probably not that big of a deal. For some departments and agencies, I think a lot of the contracts would be over that dollar amount.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, any more?
Question? Yes.
Mr. Brminske, you want a question?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we talking about having put down in writing all contracts over $25,000?
That's what the proposal is, I believe.
They'd be itemized to the budget. They'd have a specific line item.
And we're, and we're getting resistance and we're using the word that there are thousands of $25,000 contracts that are being signed?
There's hundreds.
Now, Mr. Urban can attest to what I'm saying. I think that when I was a Commissioner, and I'm sure when he was a Commissioner, there wasn't a contract that was signed that didn't come up at a public meeting. And most especially those that were $25,000 were made known to the Commissioners. And I don't know how much it's slowed the government down. I resent that, that they say that it's slowed down. It seems like every time something comes up like this, we have a choice. Do this or else. If we don't do this, we're gonna suffer consequences like a slowdown in, in important power or there's gonna be some political activity or something. I don't buy that. I don't buy that at all. I said a number of times that I wanted to see all contracts over $25,000 presented to the council. Just presented to the council, but that doesn't happen. And if this is that, if this is just to suggest that $25,000 or more contracts are presented to us and we're being told that there are thousands of $25,000 contracts if there's just, if there's just, you know, a thousand of them, that's 25 million, $25,000. I don't, I don't, we don't do that kind of business, I don't think. But I think the idea here is to me that we have a pot and we have all the money in there. And the manager is allowed to go in there whenever he wants to take out what he needs to sign a $25,000 contract because we approved that pot of money the year before. That, I think we should know the year before that here's a pot of money of X dollars and these are the things that may be coming up or these are the things that we're, we're working on. So now when we come up with a $25,000 bill, well, it was in, we dropped that up last year. It was in there, okay, so let's, let's pass it or let's not pass it. That, that, that's not transparency, that's good business. That's business 101. And I think that we have to start thinking that way. But, and again, I repeat, I, especially after reading that newspaper article where on the one contract that if we don't do it, well, then we're gonna have to hire more people. Look at, we're giving the manager money. Here's his, here's your money. Make it work. Next year, and I proposed it right now in, in advance, next year I'm gonna propose that we give the manager X amount of dollars and say, "Okay, work your budget. You're a manager, do your tricks, okay?"
Can I second that now?
You're supposed to be good. Everything's running so good? Make it run better. Make it run better. We can't keep going to the people. You're bragging about, about having a surplus. Not only to me means that we didn't figure too well on, on the budget for two years before if we had a surplus. I think we should be hitting it right on the nose. If we hit it right at, at the end of the year where we're supposed to, that's a good job. But don't brag about having a surplus. Don't brag about having a surplus. And don't use stretch on me, anyway.
Mr., Mr.
But if we don't do something, we're gonna suffer repercussions. And, and finally, when, when you're talking about, you know, we have, we were told that who, who works for who, just remember this, please. The manager works for us. We don't work for him. He works for us. Thank you.
Mr. Pedri?
I want to thank Mr. Brminske for his honesty. Because in his comment, he just stated he wants to approve all contracts over $25,000. That's what's going to happen here. This is an ordinance that's bathed in the cloak of transparency, but that is not the thrust of this ordinance. What's gonna happen is in September of the year before, we will have to have every single contract over $25,000 negotiated, finalized, and itemized and in the, in the county budget. I have to get my budget into council by October 15th. So by October of that year, by that date, I have to have everything completed and in the budget. And during the year, I can't make any movements to that budget because it's, unless it'll be, surprise, approved by County Council. Once again, that, that's the true impetus of this, of this ordinance is to give County Council the ability to approve every single contract. Mr. Brminske clearly just stated in his, in his own comments. And obviously, you can, as you can tell, I think county administration would be opposing this ordinance.
Swetze?
Well, where does it say that in there?
Mr. Brabinski, hold on one second, please.
Mr. Swetze? I just want, just for really the new council members, you know, we have a $300 million budget when you put all funds. Yes, the general fund is around 120 million. It may not be thousands, and Mr. Brabinski's math is correct. Even if there was, you know, $10 million, that's a huge amount of money, but it's, in the $300 million budget, we're not talking 10 or 20 million on 40 million. So, yes, there are large contracts, yes, there's a large amount, we don't have an exact amount, because, as I said, I didn't even read this today, but when you put all the funds together, the county has almost a $300 million budget.
Mr. Brabinski?
Well, I, I, someone's not clear here. Ms. Howe is asking that, that all of the $25,000 plus contracts be made known. Is that correct, Ms. Howe?
Yes. Itemized in the budget.
But what's the big problem there? We're not, there's nowhere in there that it states that all the contracts before they're, they are, are good, or have to be approved by us. We're asking to know about them. If you have a pot of money, and you're going to sign a contract, I don't know where these surprise $25 million contracts are coming from in the third month or fourth month of the year. You must have been working on it beforehand, and if you were, then in your budget, you should have an item that says, we're working on this, and the cost is approximately going to be. And so, when it comes time, well, we, we were working on that last year, and we put in the budget $35 million to cover this, but it only cost us 26. Oh, what's, what's the problem? Or it didn't cost us that much, or it, it cost us more than, than that. I, I'm, I'm lost, I mean, it just seems like we're doing everything under a bedsheet. We don't, we don't want anybody to see what we're doing here. If there are, if there are a thousand, $25,000 plus contracts out there that we're signing, and we haven't seen one, I find that very, very disturbing.
Anyone else?
Yes, you have to come up with the estimate for the budget, anyway. It's a question of how you break it down in the line item budget. It does not mean that every contract has to be signed, sealed, and delivered by the middle of September. It simply means that you have to estimate how much you're going to spend on a particular contract, if not for a particular vendor, for a particular reason. And those estimates have to go on, anyway, in the budgeting process. This is just asking for a little more detail in that budgeting process. Mr. Pedri also referred to the position budget, and that was also an administrative code amendment that I brought a few years ago, and the resistance to that amendment was unbelievable, I tell you as the new council members, and those who've only been here for two years. The resistance to itemizing the positions, the exact positions that are funded by that budget, was unbelievable at, from the administration. But we went ahead and did it, and they are required to show us what positions we are funding. It's the only way that you can responsibly budget. So, I think this is just another example of how we need to have a clear idea of where those estimates come from, when we look at a line item that encompasses several contracts.
Anyone else? Segment.
$25,000 contract on a, well over a $3 million budget, on a one-year basis. Let me ask you something, Ms. Howe. Would you be, why wouldn't it be, why is it on a yearly or annual basis? Why wouldn't you say something like, any contract or obligation that we would result in a payment by the county of more than $75,000 or $100,000 in a two, over two years? I mean, rather than just a one-year, $25,000-
This is the language that's in the charter-
I know that's in the-
Regarding, regarding the contract level, okay? So, I'm not saying-
You were just trying to put it in writing.
I'm, no, it's not the same language. Excuse me, Mr. Pedri, I have the floor.
Pardon me.
All right.
Excuse me, Ms. Howe. The segment had the floor when you interrupted, so please-
She asked me a question.
Please be professional about that. Thank you.
Would you like, if you would like me to answer, please let me know.
Okay, I just was wondering if there's a necessity, if we're, if we're just putting what's in the charter in writing, or if there's something there that, because we have, according to Mr. Pedri, our manager, that there are so many $25,000 contracts, or in that vicinity, that, you know, even if you did an estimate, there would be a many, maybe some would, some would come out to less than $25,000, some might come out a little bit more than $25,000, but if you were looking at greater than, over a period of, say, two years, would that be acceptable to you?
Well, Ms. Saban, thank you. The language, the, the levels that are in this are the levels that are listed in the charter, and that's why I use those levels, because those are the levels that we might not see if the, if the manager approves a contract for $25,000 in a budgeted year. I don't want to have approval of that, I want to see them itemized. But I took the levels, the, the dollar amounts, from the charter. I felt if those, if those levels were good enough for the charter, they were certainly good enough for the administrative code as well.
Mr. Ma, Mr. Jeff?
Anybody else with questions first? Okay, Manager Pedri?
Ms. Saban, the full answer to that question is that the levels that Ms. Howe are presenting are for the levels of the charter that state that those contracts have to go in front of council. Over $25,000 in a year that's not budgeted, that is the major contention here. This ordinance means that in a year that there is a budget, county council, if I don't specifically put it into the budget, let's be honest as to what the truly says, let's be transparent, if we're going to use that word. Let's, this is the situation that we have. That $25,000 in a year that's not budgeted is the major, is the major issue at hand. If this ordinance is, is, is passed, it means that any contract that is not specifically in the budget for 2018, or any year, would have to go in front of county council. Right now, council, contracts will have to go in front of you if it's in the year that there's no budget. So, for example, I can sign a $100,000 contract into 2018 contract, as long as the contract ends in, in December 31st of 2018, by the charter. If it's $100,000 in 2018, and $26,000 in 2019, there's no budget for 2019, that goes in front of council.
Anyone else?
Would I be correct in making this an assertion that to avoid any of the problems you had before concerning the discussion ADP, that you would make, you were making a pledge that everything's going to be brought to council regardless?
You've, you've seen the amount, I'm not saying everything's going in front of, in front of council, I have to run, I have, I have to run, I have to run this place. But obviously, you've seen the amount of, the amount of contracts that have been approved by this council, since I've been county manager, has been more than has been approved in under home rule. I'll put that in front of anybody, okay? The Panzita contract, the shower contract, I could have signed that myself. But I say, you know, let's go, let's put that in front of council to make a decision as to what you want to be doing here. That's my personal decision, and I decided to do that. Look at some of these other contracts that are, that are coming in front of council, same thing. I could do the same thing with the elections contract. I can say, hey, listen, this is purely my decision, I'm going to set it up, and I'm going to sign it, council's allocated the funds for it, but I'm saying, let's put this in front of county council to make a, a clear understanding as to what's going on here. That's my own personal thing. I am, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to tie up the hands of future county managers down the road if they don't share the same philosophy that I have, that these things should be transparent where they need to be.
Well-
Anyone else, Mr. Brabinski?
Yes, well, maybe, maybe that's something we have to change, the fact that you feel you have the right to do that without telling us. Maybe that's something we should be looking at. That we're the ones that are, are the bottom line, we're the ones that are accountable for the money, and it's being spent, and you're spending it, and we don't know, we want to know about it. I think maybe we should look at that. I don't know, if that's what the administration feels, that they have the authority to spend the money as they see fit. I think maybe we should start looking at that very seriously.
If I could say one more thing?
Yep.
This does not change the manager's ability to sign a contract in the current year for $25,000. It just asks him to list it in the budget. That's what it asks for. It asks for a list, which-
Anyone else?
He should have, anyway.
Anyone else?
I, I'm just concerned about paperwork. I hate paperwork, extra paperwork. I just don't like it. That's me. I think the way things have been going, since Mr. Pedri has been the county manager, have been good. Over the run since home rules started, we've gone from just a little north of $420 million in debt to, now we're a little bit south of $290. Retirement, the pension fund is in great shape. By the way, the audit looks like will be finished in May this year. I think you'd be happy to hear that. And I think things are going very well, and I, I just don't see how this makes things better. So, I, that, that concerns me. I just want-
One more question.
Our, our vote tonight is, is to approve the ordinance?
No, we're introducing the ordinance.
Just introducing-
Ms. Howe made the motion, Mr. Urban second, so we, introduction of an ordinance requires four votes, four affirmative votes. Yes, Mr. Brabinski, go ahead. Mr. Brabinski, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a statement in regards to what Mr. Keller just said. I don't believe the administration can take credit for the fact that our, our debt has gone from $420 to $290. That money for that comes right off the top of the budget every year. And what's left from there is what they have, what we have to work with. So, that, that has nothing to do with, with, with good management. That money comes right off the top. And then after that, that's where the good management comes in. So, let's not, I, you know, we, we're paying for that out of our gross receipts. So, I don't, I can't take credit for it, none of us on council can, neither can the manager. So, let's, let's be honest, as, and I heard that said a couple of times, let's be honest. So, let's be honest. It's coming off the top of the money that's being collected in taxes, it's not because of good management.
What I'd like to see, if this ordinance gets introduced, is I would like to see that list of contracts brought as part of the discussion process. Show me, show me what they all are. Show me how many you actually have. Somebody says a hundred, somebody has a thousand, how many are out there? I mean, if you really don't know how many are out there, then there's got to be a list somewhere, and for good budgeting purposes, that, that list ought to equal what the money is in the pot. That money in the pot shouldn't be overinflated. Well, there's another million or two in that pot that I can spend on this or that as it comes up throughout the year. I don't really know what it is, but, well, that's not, that's not good management, that's not good budgeting.
Anyone else?
Just one brief comment.
Yes.
The money was coming off the top-
Mr. Keller, then Mr. Brabinski, please.
The money was coming off the top the last few years, and we went $16 million further in debt, according to our budget. We haven't done that in the last two years. So, I, I, I got the, the administration for doing a good job.
Mr. Brabinski?
We, we collect taxes, and it comes right off the top. What are you talking about? $27 million every year, $26 million, $27 million. That's established. That's not some, that's not some makeup figure, that's established right off the bat. They have to say, okay, we need $27 million this year to pay off towards the debt. So, what are you, what are you saying? I don't understand what you're saying.
Anyone else?
I couldn't, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Haas, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I don't see what's wrong with itemization. In the work session, we're going to have the Elections Bureau come and talk about poll books. Last week, I asked for an itemization of the savings, and also how much the contract is going to cost. I plan to do that also for the chamber agreement. I mean, I just think this is, this is just good government. I don't see it as, as anything that's going to clog up the works, because essentially, the management would have that all ready to go, if they're going to approve a contract. So, what's wrong with having 11 extra pair eyes look over the document? If I think if we would have maybe implemented this, the New World contract many years ago, maybe things would have turned out a little bit, or maybe we could have saved a little bit more money in that undertaking. I see no problem with introducing this, and then we can open up for more further discussion in the next council meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please. Again, it's an introduction of ordinance, four affirmative votes, which means it moves forward to a public meeting in the second reading.
Ms. Saban?
No.
Mr. Tishney?
No.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Vogt?
No.
Ms. Wakis?
No.
Mr. Brabinski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Four affirmative votes, so it moves on to the public meeting in second reading. Now, we're down to public comment on any non-adjunct items. We have several people. Mr. Gassias?
A quick comment on this ordinance. This is nothing more than a control arrangement, and overseeing expenditures, and I think it should be approved, all right? Seen a lot of things in business, and I know where you have to watch your money, and how to work the budgets. All right, Chamber of Commerce is here tonight, right? They're going to make another sales pitch. All they want to do is pay off, you know, they hold this carrot out to you. They're going to sell land, all right, and give you back a certain amount of money, but they're not going to pay the full load of taxes. But now we want the $5 charge to the property owner to pay more taxes, all right? You call it a fee, it's a tax. The Chamber of Commerce has a tendency to come in here with their hands out all the time. They gave how many millions away already to them, all right? You've got 100, 700 and some odd thousand here that they want forgivenesses of. What's going on, all right? How many people here are in love with the chamber, all right? Somewhere, this guy's got to get straightened out, and I know who he is, and he knows who I am, okay? This $5 fee, that's ridiculous, all right? It's not going to work. I would pay more than $5, a lot more than any of you will, all right? Which doesn't bother me, but the principle of the thing, the property owners getting nickel and dime to death with this nonsense, okay? Children of youth, they're reading the paper, going, $5 donations for socks. They get $1,200 a month per child. What are the parent, the foster parents doing with the money? That's a number of different things, okay? The world arrangement with the computers, why isn't the proper software being utilized, all right? And this ADP, what's the story behind the scenes? There's a lot more here that meets the eye, okay? You know, people come here to these meetings, and a number of us have been coming here for years, all right? You don't pay attention to it, anyway, all right? But everybody that comes here wants something. They want money, they want jobs, all right? They got neptunism going on. They want assistance, they want more people, all right? It's a joke. He's hired to manage this business, let him manage it, all right? And it should be an overseeing of all of the aspects of the management. $25,000? Incorporateds also have budgets, and they also play with numbers. You take a $100,000 contract, and because you have limitations, they're divided up into four contracts of $25,000. There's all kinds of ways you play the game, all right? And a tyrant of the chamber coming here with their hat in the hand and crying the blues and makes the sales pitch, and he wants you to give him something for nothing.
Mr. Hola?
Someone from the media asked me to ask a single question. How many people in the audience are here for the first time? Raise your hands, please. Nobody. I win my bet. I don't know how many more times I've got to say this. A plan is not a budget. A budget is absolutely, certainly not an approval. When are you folks going to get that through your heads? When you do a capital plan, how many times of all the line items you've looked at over the last five years, have you discussed an alternative to any of them? The answer is never. That's not an analysis of your capital spending. Shame on you. Once upon a time, there was a company that had the same number of people as you. At any one time, at least 50 of them were on the road. That means 50, almost 50, let's say 40 expense reports a day, and like amount of travel advances, and like amount of settlements. And in addition, all payroll activities. Guess how many people did all that? Somebody? Anybody? For 1,500 people? Nobody knows. The answer is one. She had an associate's degree, period, at the time. Don't need three people to do this. Furthermore, the way you're doing capital doesn't meet the minimum requirements of Gatsby 35. You've heard that story before, but we don't care. And so, you're going to do it by hand, instead of letting, letting existing system do it for you. And you've already taken a hit in your audit for one of the modules that you're now not, not doing. What the hell is going on here? It's just unbelievable. Oh, by the way, how many people here have ever heard of Pareto's Law? How many people in the audience know what Pareto's Law is? One. Have anybody in finance besides former employees? No. You've got a finance director that doesn't know what Pareto's Law is. I'll tell you what it is. It's a method that most sane companies use to figure out where the cutoff should be for approvals. Right now, we have no approvals. You put numbers in the budget from the ceiling tile holes, and that's about it. And then you say, go ahead, Mr. Manager, go spend it. And he does. If this were a real organization, there'd be people asking for resignations tonight. Don't tell me at all that it's going to take more people and it's going to... Had a firm that was spending $100 million a year, okay? And according to Pareto's Law, $5 million or $5,000 was the cutoff for capital approvals. Anything less than that went by the sign guide. Anything over that got reviewed, previewed, and roasted. And here we are, doing none of that, okay? I had a firm that guaranteed to the clients that we would reduce capital by 30%. We never had to give any money back, okay? It was easy pickings. And here we are burning like crazy.
Mr. Raible?
With respect to the blighted property presentation, committee presentation, I'm in strong favor of preserving and sustaining the blighted property review committee. It is not only a necessity, but it is a dire need for the municipalities that cannot deal with the blighted properties within their municipalities without assistance from the county. If, without the blighted property committee, the municipalities cannot do anything with those properties, such as bank-owned properties that are in limbo that they have not claimed those properties in foreclosure, like zombie properties. So, I think that the blighted property committee needs to be preserved and sustained. And to say that there's no funding for it, we've discussed this at previous meetings, that there's, I think Mr. Riley brought up the $15 million in the business loan fund that's now defunct that can be utilized. Because under HUD requirements, slumming blight is an eligible use of that money. So, that could be used. There's also the $8 million of U-DAG money that's been sitting for the... I understand he mentioned the Hotel Sterling, but I'm sure if you talk to HUD, they will allow the $8 million, part of that $8 million to be utilized for the administrative costs for the blighted property committee, for the municipalities. I'm sure they would be willing to work with the county on that. As far as the $5 registration fee, I don't know how many of you saw in the Hazleton paper, but the officials in Hazleton aren't for the $5 fee. And I've said it before in 2016 that it's discriminatory against the areas that don't have county roads and bridges. And with respect to the matching funds of the $2 million, that's for 2019's budget, as I said in the previous meeting, which I misspoke. It's $350 million that the state allocated for those matching funds. But in that motor vehicle fund, where the money is coming from, that's from registration fees that we already paid to the state for. And as far as the gasoline tax. So, the state is dangling that carrot in front of you, saying, if you implement that $5 fee, you're going to get $2 million. But if they already put $350 million in next year's budget, why don't they just give $5 million to each county without the $5 registration fee? They can do that. The legislators can do that. It's in the Constitution for the gas tax and motor vehicle fund. The General Assembly can authorize the disbursement of funds as they see fit, as long as it's for the remediation and reconstruction of state roads and bridges. I believe it's Article 8, Section 11 in the state constitution. So, by implementing this fee, if you do this $5 fee, you will not only be asking for a surcharge on top of money we already paid for, but you'll also be telling the cities within the county that they must pay for something they'll never even use, which I think is very discriminatory. So, I think you should keep that in mind when you ask the state officials those questions. And I think that the money, the six cents increase that you gave, that you put through in the last increase for the gas tax should have went to the counties for their roads and bridges. That way, this $5 fee would not be necessary. Thank you.
Mr. Shiner?
Over the years, several times at these meetings, council has patted themselves on the back and the management for paying down the debt. If you want to pat somebody on the back for paying down the debt, pat the residents of this county, because it says in the charter that you pay the debt service. Whether you turn the lights on in this building or not, the debt service gets paid. So, if you want to give somebody congratulations, congratulate the people of this county for adding this into the charter and approving it as it stands. To itemize these contracts, as requested in the ordinance tonight, is not a big deal. We have this fantastic system called New World. Oh, wait, we didn't approve that until three months into this year, when it expired last year. But we're going to say we don't know what contracts we want? Come on. All New World has to do is print out the list. I know one of the council members that's no longer here would like it on one page, but, you know, we don't have to go by that anymore. We can have five or 10 pages. And if that's what it takes to be transparent and open, I think it's the proper thing to do. And lastly, I'd like to comment on the agenda item number four, the motion to adopt the resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement. Well, I can't really say anything because I don't know anything about it because you voted without giving the information to the public, which is a violation of the sunshine law. What is wrong with you people? You're the legislative body of this county. You create the laws to run this county, and you can't read a law? You can't understand it? You do not have the ability to vote on a contract without releasing that information to the people. Mr. Urban is 100% correct. Ask a friend that's a lawyer. Ask somebody if you're that uncertain as to what these laws mean in this state. But please, stop violating the laws of this county in the state of Pennsylvania.
Mr. Jayfer? Mr. Jayfer there? Ms. Spackey?
Hi, good evening, council members. I wanted to comment and very briefly to say the ADP contract is not needed. You could reconcile the, synchronize the payroll by moving it forward and then reconciling the PMR and I payroll cycles to the B payroll cycle through the New World and Chrono Systems. You move the pay date forward, you reconcile, well, then you put the B, take off the payroll prep process, and then you start doing all of the machinations to do the six payrolls to the B payroll cycle. And it's not as complicated as it sounds, and it doesn't cost the county hardly any money. You don't have to go out with a new contract with ADP. Regarding Madam Linda Houck's ordinance, I agree with it. I think this ADP contract was done through deceit and trickery. And that's the underlying reason for that ordinance. I really think you should ask for the resignation of Attorney Pedry and Mr. Swets. How many times do you have to lie to somebody before you don't trust them again? Once. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I put my paper up during the meeting.
Yeah, but you put it for a work session. You want to speak now, you may.
Yeah, I'll speak now.
That'd be fine. Ms. McCabe?
I sat here and listened to you for an hour, and I can't believe that the council works this way. These guys are councilmen, and you're supposed to run the show, not just sit back and say, I don't want to see paperwork. I mean, this is ridiculous to hear stuff like that. You have an attorney down here. I don't know if she works for the county, or she wouldn't be negligent on everything, saying that we can't do it this way, we can't do it that way. Do you guys, the council members, have your own attorney, or is she supposed to represent you two?
This is our solicitor.
It seems like everything you bring up, she tells you that you can't do it that way, you know? Things change, you know? If you want to change it, you should be able to change it. She's only working for you. Know what I'm saying? Enough on that. But on the registration fee, I was here about two years ago, and I brought it up. And I can't believe I'm back here two years. And a lot of things has changed in two years. Gasoline right now is, the state gets $0.58 a gallon. You guys are looking for five more of the seniors. I'll give you an example of what the seniors are getting hammered with. Back in October, I got in an accident. My new Subaru was totaled. Car insurance only pays $5,000 towards your medical. The rest goes towards your medical, like my and Medicare. Medicare is telling me they don't want to pay for paramedics because they're an interceptor. They'll pay for the West Miami ambulance, but they won't pay for... I got transported from Geisinger down to John Heinz. I had to pay for the people that transported me down. I mean, there's so many changes with the seniors today. You guys better open your eyes and start helping the seniors, you know? Because there's changes every day being made, you know? I just can't believe it, that you sit up there and say, the unions can do what they want. No, you guys are appointed by the people, and you should be doing stuff, not just saying, well, we're going to listen to the manager all the time, you know? One more thing. Back in December, I brought up, I seen a guy get an award for safety here tonight. I reported that, who knows where the Water Street Bridge is on that council, between Pittston and West Pittston. Half of the lights' tent is out since December. Well, I called Pedry, and he put me through to Ed O'Neill. This is four and a half months already. The bridge is so narrow, I'm surprised nobody was killed on the bridge already. But Mr. O'Neill said, we're working on it, we're working on it. Four and a half months, half of the lights are out. This is a disgrace with the county that you can't get PP&L to go out. Pete told me that PP&L looked at it, and they can't do nothing. That's a shame. You have an electrical engineer working for the county. That guy should be on that job tomorrow, looking to see. I worked for RCA for 30 years, and I know that stuff could be changed. Don't tell me it can't be worked there, they can't do nothing. I worked for PP&L before I got hurt. I realized that it could be fixed. Don't tell me that the fixtures or something can't be changed. So, I just want council to look into it and see why these lights ain't being fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Motion to adjourn?
No move.
Mr. Kelleher, second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Wakis, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposition, abstentions, unheard, motion carries. We'll take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 5:00 after 8:00.